These regular meeting to order, first order of business.
Recording and dropping.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Consideration of any changes, additions or removals to the agenda?
No, sir.
The few minutes from previous meetings?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that for January seventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Comments from citizens? I see none. Department head reports? Everything looks good.
Maybe they like our more inches every day.
Yeah, well, that's been the story of the highway department is just in a constant right now.
May I ask for a comparison with the monthly sewer department? I love that they say we treated seven point eight million gallons of wastewater in January. It'd be nice if they referenced what that was comparatively year over year or if they just gave us the number.
Yep.
Yeah, maybe year to year.
Yeah, do year to year in previous month, maybe.
And what is our salt and or sand situation looking like?
You want the truth? We are currently, you know, we're having to grab some more salt from a vendor near or sand from near the vendor nearby just because it is.
It's one of those winters.
It's a daily occurrence. It really is, you know? Again, they were out last night coming, you know, when we left last night for the meeting, it was clear ice. So it came in, did the morning, then they, you know, and.
Do we have much salt on on hand?
We 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 continue to get deliveries, so yeah, we're pretty.
I heard it went up five bucks a ton today.
We have not been notified of anything, so we, I think, we sign a contract, so I mean, hopefully ours is.
First slack.
Yeah, I think we're, because we think we're in it, I think it was eighty-three, eighty-three ninety a ton, so.
I think it had to do with the tariff.
Yeah, I'm sure.
What was the increase, Bob?
Five dollars a ton.
Five dollars?
Five dollars a ton.
He heard that, he does.
We we haven't had that, but.
Yeah.
But it's. Told that from the contract.
It's sometimes you gotta go up, put it on, and you plow it off, you know, but it's. But, you know, Rhonda's a good job of, you know, sometimes coming on the day, the traffic, how many people are in town? They might do the, just do the back roads or they might do, you know, in town and delay it. You know, we have weather coming in Thursday and then Saturday. Saturday is gonna be tough if it's during the day because a lot of people are going home because of the Super Bowl. So we gotta work, you know, people are gonna be headed south earlier on Saturday and Sunday, so hopefully.
I hope.
Yeah.
Actually, we're close.
Oh, good for you.
Super Bowl.
My brother says best night of drive.
Yeah.
On Super Bowl Sunday, he drove somewhere and he goes with his dog way on the road.
I'm flying that day. Hopefully it's nice and easy.
At the Roman Club, they have a big party there, so they stay over till Monday.
Yeah, it's a big deal. It's a holiday.
Age receivables getting a little better.
They are.
Plus last month.
Yeah.
We're getting, one thing we've gotta do is we're kind of gonna implement, as we talked to the water department. You know, we have some of the same, you know, frequent flyers and once people, you know, albeit they're on a payment plan. I think having a monthly maybe reminder call, say, you know, make your payment. Um, it's good because once a lot of times you make a payment plan, you make one or two payments and then it's easy to forget about. So just kind of the due diligence in our office to do that.
Allocation review and possibly approve sixteen Bridge Street. New construction, any?
No issues with that. That is the property that is across from Gases Group Building. That will be a new building that is put in there if Joe was looked at as well, so no problem.
Now, is this just for, for Khan or?
For new build?
It's complete new build, yeah.
So they're subdividing that lot?
Yes.
I was gonna say, if that comes out, sure, it's a DRB.
How many subdivisions do we have going on right now in the town?
I'd have to look. I mean, I don't think it's an extremely disamount, but just curious.
When do you do these, Bob? Do we do them separately?
This year, I think we're up to like seventy-three or eighty.
Uh, okay, I make a motion to approve the wastewater permit.
You're doing sixteen Bridge Street?
For sixteen Bridge Street.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six Pleasant Street. Currently has allocation for two. One two-bedroom unit, one three-bedroom unit, and they're looking to add three bedrooms to the two-bedroom unit. That is just an additional three allocation.
I'll make a motion that we accept the fifty-six Pleasant Street allocation for two units awake.
Yeah.
That's right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twenty-five Spalding Farm Road. We'd like to start a new construction consisting of a six-bedroom home. Apparently we previously agreed to it. We had a communication error.
Yeah.
And they didn't pay.
They didn't pay, so we need to just reapprove.
Reapprove?
Yep.
Excuse me, have you made?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Twenty-five Spalding?
All in favor?
Aye.
Just make sure she's all set because she's trying to get the. We just did this.
I know.
I know you can, you can hear everything backwards, but not many here.
Review and approve certificate of highway mileage.
So this is our annual due diligence to approve our hot mileage as certified up to the state of Vermont. We have no changes this year, so as presented, we have two point two nine five miles of class one road in town, which is state highway, um, two point five four, class two, four point eight three, class three roads. And you see a state highway is point one four zero with a total point oh two class four, so.
Make a mo, there's no changes, correct?
There's no change. This is the village.
Nine miles. Make a motion to approve that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does it matter where we sign?
Just down the bottom in that box somewhere.
Gave you the top one. Uh, I haven't received a budget from the village, is that correct?
These numbers don't add up to that, right? It's because they don't add up to that. They add to five point four seven eight.
Are you missing the class four at the bottom?
Is that what I'm doing? No, if that still wouldn't make it.
Well, you got a two point two nine five, you got a two point five four, you got a four point.
There you go.
That's it, that's where it is. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was doing, okay, thank you, thank you. Just make sure. Did you say anywhere here?
Better to catch it.
It is, because I always like have to do math. Thank you, thank you, Alicia.
Well, the mileage is okay.
I was reading it as full, you know, over here.
It wasn't lined up.
Because it's not lined up there.
So fiscal year twenty-six budget discussion and review.
And as Mr. Hajack said, you have not received a budget yet. My goal was to present that and review it tonight, but due to my defunct computer skills, I deleted everything that I had done.
Oh.
Which for the village isn't a huge, I, I, you know, thankfully, to offset my poor computer skills, I have a fairly good memory, so I can put it back in. So what I'll end up doing is I'll just redo it. I will, um, send you a copy of it, review it, and then, you know, in the next two weeks or so, we'll just have to have a brief meeting to go review. It shouldn't be, but I, you know, for my.
When do we have to have, we have to have that done?
Thirty days before meeting?
Yeah, so within the next two weeks.
Yeah, okay.
But again, pretty straightforward. There's no surprises in it. It's more just I, sometimes I get too excited that I think I can do formulas in the spreadsheet and I just shouldn't do that.
Too big for your cell britches.
Well, you know, that whole equals plus and clicking, I get excited and things, bad things happen, so it's not great.
Well, thank you for, uh.
It's, it's, it's there.
Letting us know and we're.
We'll just have to find it.
A bunch of updates.
Yeah, so I only have a few, um, you know, kind of you touched on, winter has been, you know, wreaking a little bit of havoc with the highway department in town, just it seems like it snows a little bit every day. And unfortunately, just enough that the crews have to go out and the sidewalk clouds have to go out, so. Becomes a problem maintenance wise and obviously it's been cold, so, you know, wreaks a little havoc on the, on the equipment. We're down a truck currently at the sidewalk, but did have to be towed back to the shop the other day. Um, I think it got stuck up by the library, um, so, but Josh, I guess, had a sandwich with him, so he was able to buy this time until they get.
I saw him working on it today.
Yeah, so, um.
Like by your house?
That's a good strip right there. It's well kept.
So, you know, business as usual there, um, we are continuing to, you know, plug along at, looking at, you know, a very firm timeline for repairs, completion of repairs at the wastewater plant. I mean, that's still, you know, the, you know, that's still gonna be two or three years out, um, with that process. This year, we're looking at really trying to grade the area so it doesn't look like, you know, an RC racetrack down there with all the undulations all over the place, so, um, we're gonna look at some more aesthetics of it down there.
I see Joe said they were starting to re-sign the.
That, the headworks building, yep, so we're gonna start, we'll start to do that once it's a little warmer. Merger process, um, is kind of coming to a close in terms of all the, the, the side work on it. By the end of this week, we'll probably have a draft, a final draft of the charter to this board. It's, you know, pretty straightforward.
May I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
With the merger, um, we trustees are in charge of wastewater and the charter committee's been discussing making a Ludlow Water Commission, so it encompasses the water and wastewater into one board, uh, relieving the select board or the, um, town elected officials. Uh, that duty, and I don't know if that's something that we need to vote on, relinquishing our power prior to that, or if that's a discussion that we need to have.
So I think once the, if the charter and the merger passes, then that will go into place and we will have to, you know, essentially that it will become, you know, because they will be voted on, those positions will be voted, so at the time that the charter goes into effect, we'll have to have those elections. I think once it's approved by the town, obviously, there's a lot of things at the state level that still need to happen, so I think there is a, you know, a significant time, there's a lag there, so, no, ideally, if it's approved and, let's call it, you know, April, if it's approved by the voters, realistically, having a vote maybe in November for the officers might be legitimate.
That would give a time to go through the state.
Correct, because it's gonna take a little while.
So the town charter will be voted on at our annual.
It will be, so during that day, the way we have it laid out is that it will be voted on, so the village votes during the day. You know, for all, you know, it has to be Australia ballot, so it'll be voted on during the day as well as the town as well. So obviously, folks with the, who will live in the village essentially can vote twice because they vote for the town and the village, so.
What's up?
Is that planned?
Yeah. So, you know, and we've talked about it, that it's time and operationally, it's not going to affect the operations of the town as, you know, as the average citizen sees it, it's just gonna streamline and allow for a lot better funding opportunities, you know? We always come back to the fact that the village had a shell out sixty grand to pay for the paving of the access road because we didn't get a, you know, grant, um, that would, if we just had one application, it would have been a different story.
Would have covered the whole thing.
Thank you. So that's.
Any else updates, Brandon? Okay, other business?
So we are, Emma and Abby are here to kind of give us an update and talk about the farmer's market proposal going into this year. So I will defer to you guys.
Thank you. Oh, well, it's great to see you guys again in twenty twenty-five. So we're coming to petition for the Ludlow Farmer's Market to be on Depot Street for its second year while entering its seventeenth season. Uh, we're really happy that we got approved last year because we had an immense success in the community. Um, just some statistics from last year, through the twenty-one weeks we operated, we were able to host fifty-seven unique vendors, so that's fifty-seven small businesses from Vermont. We had an average of thirty-one vendors each week. And from available sales data, which was reported from vendors, that was all anonymous, it was all voluntary. We estimate we brought almost four hundred thousand dollars through to vendors throughout those twenty-one weeks, which is very impressive. Uh, not to mention, we also were able to be authorized for other food assistance programs. SNAP is a federal funded program, but there's a Vermont initiative called Crap Cash, which matches SNAP dollars, and that authorization will live with us for the years to come, which is incredibly exciting.
Is that crab?
Crab?
Crab cash.
Crop.
Crop cash.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought what you thought, but with a P on the end.
Crop cash, pardon me. And another food assistance program through Women and Children's Alliance, which is called Farm to Family. And those are dollars that directly go toward farms specifically for fresh local produce. So we're incredibly happy to be able to participate in those programs and see coupon redemption every week that we were able to be authorized. Local storefronts also benefited from this. We brought in a couple hundred people plus every week. It was amazing to see just from nine AM to one PM every Sunday, the town really come to life. Uh, I was there every week setting up early and I stayed until every vendor was gone each week. And it really was something to see after I opened up the street again, removed the traffic codes, uh, just how many people had been there and then, and then back to normal. So what we're asking for this year is to operate again in twenty twenty-five. Again, it's our seventeenth season, but we'd love to be on Depot Street again because it was amazing to be in the center of town, see the local businesses thrive, the storefronts, see people come and wander in and say, hey, what's this? And then make connections, buy fresh food, um, meet their neighbors there at a place to shop or to listen to live music, which we also host every week. Uh, we're looking to operate again twenty-one weeks from Memorial Day weekend through Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend, so this year that will be May twenty-fifth through October twelfth, again from nine AM to one PM on Sundays. Um, I'm also happy to report that the street closure was seemingly very efficient. I'm consistently looking for ways to make it a little bit better. Um, I'm happy to facilitate those discussions and really we are open to helping out our neighbors and making it truly a community event because farmer's markets are incredibly important for communities, keeping local dollars within communities. It circulates over about three times more than it would at a normal chain. And, um, I'm just so happy to be able to come back this year and announce that we were successful last year and we're just so excited to be able to do it again, uh, granting your approval.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was amazed at the amount of traffic, pedestrian traffic.
We were too.
It was, it was very nice. We do, do have a letter from the.
I told, so, you know, I've had conversations with Emma about the, the farmer's market. And from a town's standpoint, you know, people ask what were the issues with that? We didn't have, there weren't, you know, like the, um, you know, from an operational standpoint, you know, road closed was, you know, the first few meets were your normal people, you know, what's going on here? I can't park and that was, but, you know, aside from that, I, I would confirm with what they said. It was nice to come into town and see people walking out with buses, buying things and, um, you know, I came down almost, you know, it was my excuse to get out of my house on Sunday. So, you know, we spoke about that from an operational side of things. We had no issues. There were no, you know, I think there were, it's very, an issue with some dogs, but that was very minimal, but from a, you know, police, EMS, fire safety, highway, it was a non-issue. I mean, we communicated very well. So, and I did tell, so as we were coming to this, you know, the one did have a letter from the hatchery, which I can give you guys a copy of. I had told Emma that we had had, so, you know, just. You can't have, no, I actually have. Just enough, so.
He knew you were coming, that's why.
So this was, you know, really, you know, the board has had it, so, you know, some of the concerns from the business that's located directly in the affected area from, from the market. Other businesses in, in the area, you know, there was not, we know that there, last year, there were some concerns from Mr. Ellison, but after the meeting, I didn't personally hear from Mr. Ellison. But this is, you know, coming up. I had times during the year, the hatchery, you know, Rick and Christie said, you know, we have some concerns, we'd like to talk about them. Okay, great, you know, and that was after the fact, after the season, so. Knowing that this is they, I asked them to put it in writing for the board, so that is what you have in front of you.
So last year, we did a community outreach, I think, and asked all the businesses to supply them letters in favor or against. And that was a pretty great turnout, and I'm curious, uh, as to what the board feels the proper course of action is this year. There, there was a lot of contingencies on the approval last year. I personally loved it. I thought it was an enhancement to the community. I liked the location, um, but again, I'm not paying property tax and directly affected in the area. So I think hearing from, uh, the people again would be a, a fine idea. I don't, I don't see any reason, um, to make a, a, a decision tonight on this.
No, we, it's, I don't think we can anyway.
You can't.
Uh, no, because it was, it wasn't listed.
Oh, because it's under other business?
Yeah, it's under other business. I don't think I'd let you.
What's up?
Yeah, she wasn't gonna let you anyway.
I, I've been thinking since I read this and I really, I like the farmer's market in town because I like what it did bring in for business and, and downtown on Sunday was, during those hours, was, uh, just amazing. So, but I also, uh, would like to keep the hatchery happy. They are, they've been here a long time. They've been a mainstay in Ludlow for very long. But I, I don't wanna, I would not wanna move the farmer's market out of the village. I want it close where everybody can, can walk the streets, that's. I know Justin's very much about pedestrian traffic and, uh, and that's how your town does business, is the pedestrian traffic and, and the farmer's market definitely does that. So whether, I mean, you've just got this, so you can look it over. If we can think of another spot in the village that's not right, right, taking up part of the hatchery's parking, that would be great, so let's, let's brainstorm. I wanna keep that in the village, um, that all, or, you know, if we can, and I think we can.
Emma, have you, have you talked with Eric and Christie?
We had some communications last season that they dropped off. Um, I had one communication with them during the season that was in person. It was, I'm just kind of glancing this as I'm listening. It was regarding the food truck that was infected their building. That was a vendor issue that we were having and they came and approached me about it and I fixed it for the next week. So as long as we're made aware of any potential issues, you know, we're more than happy to help mitigate, um, problems. That's exactly what we did with Mr. Ellison and, um, we were able to come to a mutual understanding, so.
And if we can have it on Depot Street and make the hatchery happy, that's, that's awesome.
That'd be my goal as well. I'd, I'd love to be able to, uh, help facilitate some, I don't know if the word is compromise, but just where we can all benefit, we can all win.
Yep, so I, I mean, we got some time, so, um, if you can reach out to them and.
And I, and I will say, I would, you know, as you look through this, because, you know, we just got it yesterday.
Yeah.
I would, you know, if you reach out to Eric and Christie to have that, you know, conversation directly. One thing I would, that they reiterated over and over was the support of the market. And, you know, what they recognize that is not necessarily that they want it to go away, but they're also, as a business owner, they're looking, trying to look out for themselves, you know? And there are concerns that can be, you know, some of these things. You know, just, I'm not a business owner, but, you know, looking at some of the, the things like, you know, wait times, delays, et cetera, like, seems like they're, they're, that's not something that's uncommon, that can't be, you know, there can't be common ground on to, so, I mean, I think that's a place to start would be, you know, direct, reaching out to them directly.
I also, I, I'll always speak for myself. I don't think that this issue is contingent upon one business. I think it's contingent upon a myriad of businesses that make up the street, much like we did last year predominantly. You, you folks did last year, getting letters of support, recognizing what the property owners and the taxpayers that are affected want. And I think, you know, using this business as an example, just because they submitted a letter, but it should be more letters of support and encouragement or the other way. How do we notify folks of the affected area that the farmer's market's coming?
Well, I think last year was just, um.
I think the farmer's market.
You went around the most.
We, we approached businesses directly and said, hey, here's what we'd like to do, uh, here in the times. If you would like, you know, to write a letter, we would really appreciate it. These are the, kind of the terms that the town is asking. And it turned over a good amount of success and we ended up with some sponsors out of, um, stem wine during, and, uh, the line.
I think that's great. Um, I wanna hear from those guys again.
Right.
How was the first year? What do you guys think? What could change? What was great? Um, it would help.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
What were you, what's for it? Go ahead, Noah.
As a village resident, I think, uh, the farmer's market brought a lot of life, a lot of activity going on in a, on a Sunday market. I think, uh, yeah, it, from what I'm seeing here, it seems like some operational things, more so than, than maybe the farmer's market in, in general, and, you know, I think it's tough to, you know, all of a sudden, there's, the pot belly becomes a restaurant again and that starts a, whatever that smell goes down to Main and Mountain and people are going down there, you know?
Cutting this letter tomorrow, buddy.
So it's, uh, you know, it seems like, hey, it's a, it's another business there, but I'm. So it's, uh, you know, it seems like, hey, it's a, it's another business there, but I'm sure.
That's why I wanted to say, it's not contingent upon one singular business. I don't wanna make a decision for the town and the community based on one business's decision one way or another, has to be in the common good of everybody. Um, and I, to parlay, ju- piggyback what Noah said. I live, it's the best thing ever, I can just walk down the hill and it's a vibrant community, which Ludlow always should be. But I'm not an affected property owner, um, I'm just a member.
And I would say, you know, again.
I am an affected property owner.
Yes, get those letters in.
But there's, I don't think, you know, again, I, personally, I think what you guys did was amazing. To be able to, you know, from my position, you know, coming into town on a Sunday and seeing your town. Hopping like that was just like, alright, this is what it should be. So.
And we went back and forth last year on different locations that it could have been, and that was the best location.
Yeah, so, um. And, you know, in terms of timeframe, as we said, if you make these, reach out now, soon. We're gonna have to meet in the next two weeks for a budget.
And then we meet in four weeks.
Yeah, and then sort of like, I don't want you to think like, it's like, okay, it's another month, we're gonna have to meet. Special for a budget, so we could, if we have those letters and everything, within, you know, two weeks and we can talk, if we can, we can get. And then hopefully can.
And, uh, just to clarify, when we're talking about the affected businesses, um, do we, uh, would you like us to focus just on businesses on Depot Street? Other surrounding businesses, businesses that are open, is it just?
I'm open to any and all engagements.
Cause they're all, they're all getting affected.
Right.
Um, and, and I would say most of them for the positive. And, um. Yes, some of what they said was operational, in-house. But we s- we still should talk to them.
Agreed.
Yeah, we, we definitely are, um, on board to, you know, help them with resources, like. Um, customers, non-customers using their restrooms, for example, that they list on here, like.
We, we don't want that for them, nobody, nobody wants that, so. Um, you know, we would be happy to make signage or, um, we even like threw out the idea of creating like a little waiting area for their. For, um, their guests who are waiting for a table, um, we would love to. Work with them, because we're, we're not in the business of hurting any business, we're doing this to help all these small businesses that we have with the market, so. It's definitely a priority of ours to make sure that everyone who's involved is happy and if they have issues, we can try to fix them the best that we can. Yeah, we're definitely dedicated to making sure everybody is really just happy or okay with it at least.
And if we can get to the part where everybody can benefit in some way, that's, you know, that's the ultimate goal, um. I just, I think that with a community event like the farmer's market, if you're not benefiting the members of your community, then, then what are you really doing? Um, and we just, anybody who has questions, concerns, we want to invite that discussion, so we absolutely will leave here today. Um, you know, reaching out to our local businesses, reaching out to the hatchery directly, um, and hopefully coming back to you guys in two weeks with, with some more letters.
Qu- question, um, I think you had a great first year, the numbers sound really well, did, how did that? Compared to, um, up in, on, uh, on, Akemo?
So unfortunately, we're missing a lot of data from the last several years, um, it's relatively sparse, I don't have a lot to, to compare it to. Uh, really, the only data I had was twenty twenty three, which was obviously impacted by the flood. Um, but based on community information, things that I hear from members of the community, other members I've talked to, Joyce Washford, I know was involved with the previous market iteration. It seemed to be about fifteen vendors tops, maybe average of eight, and so to be able to announce we have thirty one vendors. E- every week on average is, is really lovely for us, um. And we're also able to give people a little bit more wiggle room as far as vendors go with their spacing, you know, some farmers have. Um, perishable products, we have crafters that don't need a shady spot, we have, uh, we can make some creative workarounds at the street where we help people with. Uh, and it, I think overall benefited the flow of traffic, so while I can't speak directly to numbers, because I just don't have the data available. Um, based on what I've learned, it seems like we've tripled our success.
Yeah, um, and, and I talked to vendors when I, when I went down, and they all seemed. Very happy with, with the night, um. Just one day it was raining, it wasn't, wasn't a huge crowd, but it was still pretty good.
Yeah, even on the rainy days, some of the vendors who are at the old location, they would, they all kind of would band together and be like, well, it's, it's busier than it. Would be at the old spot.
Yeah.
So even on the days where no one really wants to go, it's still, they're, they're still getting some traffic.
And, and to that point about the rain, you know, OMS lawn in the rain.
Yeah, that.
Can't drive on that, you can't set up on it, so at least for us, we were still able to host the market even with a little bit of rainy weather. We, we only canceled one market in late June, um, and that was because there was lightning.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I'm proud that that was the only market we had to cancel for weather, I'm excited, it was the only one we had to cancel for weather. Um, and hopefully we have a good streak this year, wherever we end up.
It's gonna snow.
Oh, God, I.
Just this month. So, so get us, um, some letters, but we are very happy with it.
Thank you very much, your, your words really do mean a lot, I mean, we all put a lot of, just on a personal note, we put a lot of heart and time into this market. And I, I've said this to Brendan before, I've said this to both you two. Uh, some, every, every week I was at the market at my tent and I'd look around and think, I cannot believe we did this. And it was just, it's a very proud moment for myself and my community.
Thank you, we wish you continued success. Hopefully on Depot Street.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Anything else there, board members?
Oh, I saw they're tearing the subway down today.
Better leave that Trump sign up there.
I did not see that.
I'm not putting that.
It was half down, it's probably gone.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know when they started.
This morning, I think.
Yeah, because last night when I went home, it was still there.
So that, that's it, other business, um. Set date for next meeting, March fourth, you gonna be here?
I will be here, yep. That's a big day, isn't it? I'll be stupid outside.
Okay, yeah. Alright, we've all signed warrant orders. Do we need a executive session, personnel contracts?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming in.